Welcome, everybody. Sorry. To the village of Ryan Beck Planning Board meeting for June 7, 2022. The first item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for the Terrapin Restaurant. Apparently, we have some new news from them. As far.
Good evening Chairman Miller and members of the planning board. Yes, we submitted some revised drawings, first went to comments made by the board and members of the public at the last meeting. May 17th, and I also was able to provide today to the planning clerk. A email from Richard McKeon indicating that that he and the vestry and trustees of the church. Are in agreement to provide parking in return for a fee. Under conditions as outlined in that in that email from Richard McKeon, it's really focused on evening parking. They have other events during the day, including a food pantry and Fridays and some other things. But that's that's where we are in terms of the parking with the Church of the Messiah. I'd be happy to walk you through the the plans. I know the planning board has seen it before, but not all the members of the public have, and we didn't actually do that at the last meeting. So whatever your pleasure is, happy to proceed.
Sure, go right ahead.
All right, Ryan, are you able to bring those up or should I should I do that?
I can bring it up for you, Warren, just bear with me a couple of minutes.
Of course. So a little background information for those that don't know. The intent of the chef owner, Jeff Crooner at Terrapin. Is to build a permanent structure in his parking lot immediately to the east of the building. To extend the outdoor dining season that obviously has been accommodated the last couple of years through a tent. That he's had there for for outdoor dining. Permanent structure has a couple of advantages, it doesn't have to get put up and taken down. Beginning end of the season, it also allows with some some heating elements. A slightly longer outdoor dining season, it wouldn't be for the dead of winter, but it it's a little better for rainy weather or other inclement weather. But it would have curtains that could be dropped, much like many tents do to allow again some somewhat extension of the of the season. And there are in addition to the the plans and renderings, but just to go over changes to the plan. Since the last time this was before the board, there were discussions about setbacks and and some other zoning issues. And in fact, we pulled the the street line from back. For that front yard or side yard, depending on how we look at it. But pulled it back, so the pavilion is slightly smaller than it was before it was thirty by forty, now it's like thirty five by forty. Still same number of seating. At tables shown inside that's forty additional. And just to sort of circle back to discussion last time. About the health department, the health department has determined that the capacity of the septic system is sufficient for the additional outdoor dining proposed here. So this this would replace some things that are in the parking lot right now. Part of the goal in undertaking this work is not only to create this permanent outdoor structure, but also to clean up the parking lot, which over the years has suffered a bit. To put a fenced enclosure for outdoor storage, there's a new shed in the northeast corner. That that has storage of materials inside and then a fenced refuse area proposed where there's a dumpster now. So the intent is again to clean up the parking lot and reconfigure it slightly. The current design is a sort of one way in, one way out with some angled parking, which allows for slightly narrower. Doesn't function terribly well, and by changing it to ninety degree parking. Were able to get a eliminate one of the entrances. So it's not an in and out, it's a two way in and out. We obviously lose some spaces because of the the permanent pavilion there. Not any more than we did with a temporary outdoor pavilion, but nonetheless. We are losing some spaces, which is one reason why we've been in discussions with the Church of the Messiah to get permission from them to. To officially send people over there to park if this parking lot is full. I think people do that on an unofficial basis and any other parking lots in the village as you're all aware. But this would be a more formal arrangement and and work better, I would hope for both Terrapin and for the Church of the Messiah. Along with the outdoor pavilion, there's some landscape proposed, there are planters. Pulled with plants that are detailed actually in a landscape plan on another page. And the intent is to both add some sort of attractiveness around the pavilion. And some screening, but also to provide a safety protection for people parking up against us. Because I know that's often a concern, a very valid one. People can be a little careless maneuvering and sometimes put a vehicle in the wrong gear. So having concrete to separate the structure from the parking lot, which would be filled with soil and then plant material. Will provide an added level of protection for the diners inside the outdoor pavilion. So we're showing a structure that has some elements from the the former church, the Terrapin Building, cedar singles. Some lattice with some openings in it and some elements to sort of recall without exactly replicating the church as suggested by some members of the board at previous meetings. There are some skylights to let some additional light in from above. But a gable was facing Livingston Street and the the materials, again, the roof materials and the siding materials and the colors would be intended to. To match and complement the existing church. The stormwater was a question that came up at the last meeting. We're not increasing the hard surface area, what's now asphalt and when one area is being replaced by a roof. But the stormwater would continue to be directed into an under underground stormwater system that exists under the parking lot along with the. Underground separate septic system that's that's been there since many restaurants ago in this location, I believe. So that's sort of a summary of, I think, what we're proposing to do here and happy to take questions from the planning board, members of the public. However, the the chair sees that conduct this continued hearing.
Are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or. Send something to Ryan, a text chat.
Rachel Cavell.
That's fine, I'm happy to go first, but can maybe we take the the picture off or do you want it on?
Doesn't matter.
Well, it matters only because it's hard to talk to a picture. I'd rather talk to people. I'm just really reiterating what I said last time, but I want to make it clearer what I'm what I'm. My concerns are, I'm the I think we're the first residential house. On Livingston Street after Terrapin and we love Terrapin, we go there, we use it all the time, we we. We patronize all of the restaurants in the village, so I I'm all about residents and village people, but businesses, you know, working together cooperatively and I and I'm very. But I just want to say that since I walk by it every day and since I live near it and I'm aware of it. I just want to put on the record that there is a very loud fan, I said it last time, I want to say it again, and I want to make sure that whatever is happening. It to this this new proposed structure is not going to somehow reverberate or cause more noise from the fan, which already. Makes our backyard unfortunately less habitable than I I wish it were, it's the loudest fan in in the hole, as far as I can tell. I'd have sort of done an informal survey of this of all the restaurants in the area. And as I said last time, I just wanted, since I remember when Terrapin, you know, paved their driveway from dirt to. To asphalt and I remember how pretty the pictures looked and I know how unfortunately it doesn't look this way now, there's often garbage, there's big trucks parked, there's. You know, things strewn all over, so I don't know where the maintenance, where the enforcement. How you go from beautiful site planned pictures, which all look so lovely to sort of dumping grounds, you know, four months later that we as residents have to walk by. So I just I'm hoping there's some mechanism in place, is all I'm saying, to ensure the the continued maintenance. And and beautiful beauty of the portrait that that Warren has so nicely drawn. And that's really all I want to say, I mean, here we are in a special sensitivity overlay, Livingston Street has residents and businesses, and I want us all to be living happily together. So I just wanted to go on record as saying all of that.
Josh, you have something to say?
I just want to address that, Rachel, I agree that the lot has not always looked good and, you know, one of the big problems I have is that. It wasn't really designed to be able to store the stuff that I need to store, and that's why we included a lot of elements and. Specifically kept things kind of fenced off so that the restaurant spillage that comes out will be completely contained in the areas that Warren designed and. I want it to look good, I mean, I I spend a ridiculous amount of money on landscaping because I'm I really want it to, but you know, like the restaurant operating, there's always stuff going outside, you know, there's. Boxes and all this stuff, and I just feel like this is going to really help a lot of that problem. As far as the fan, I know that there was an old fan that I inherited from Marco Polo. And I'm actually replacing that whole fan right now is kind of, and that might be kind of what's causing a lot of the issues.
That would be, that would be incredible.
Thirty year old fan, but you know, it was like this big old motor, but. We're in the process of kind of replacing that whole thing, putting modern stuff up there, but hopefully that does something, but I can't see how this is going to increase the noise, because if anything, it's going to be blocking noise.
I just want to say, I hope you're right, and I I come to this in the spirit of of conversation and cooperation, and Josh, I'm very happy to hear. Hear what you just had to say, so thank you very much.
Any other members of the public with a comment? Okay, any members of the board with comments?
Um. You know, Rachel has brought up some some valid concerns, and I've been on that street a number of times. And as I walk down the street. You can first start to hear the fan, I believe it was a nineteen Livingston. And as you get closer, it's just more and more intrusive, so I think we have to be. On top of our game on this, not just like, let's try, but I think we need to see. Documentation on a new fan or require a new fan or have. You know. Sound numbers, what it is now and what a new fan would be, because it is loud and Rachel said it's the loudest in the village and it is. And okay, it's thirty year old technology, now's the time, if you want this approval to. Basically fix a problem for the neighbors that live there. I know where I am, he's had a number of air conditioning units next to me that have been really loud. That with each succeeding breakdown and replacement and repair, it's getting better over a few decades. So, you know, I I I don't think we should just kind of say, oh, you know, that's nice, you do it. I almost think we should be requiring it and see documentation on it. The other thing is, we just got the the potential lease agreement, you know, an hour and a half ago. And this documentation is supposed to be like last week. So I'm going to say, let our attorney look at it and, you know, weigh in on it. And the last thing that I'm I'm seeing is that. Catering trailer that's there, well, that's a that's a commercial trailer, you have to have a license plate to put that on the street. And when you're when you're getting parking spaces, the. Parking space is supposed to be for patrons, so if you're taking up a patron's eight, a patron spot and saying, well, you know, we got this, but then you're filling it with a commercial. Food trailer. You don't really have it for your customers, so I think we should probably make a condition if we approve this that the trailer is not on site. So that's it for me, I I like.
I'm okay with that, I'm I'm fine with that, I'm actually, I'm I'm going to move that within a week. I have a space at my house, I can put it out. We have been doing catering the way that we used to and it doesn't need to be there, and actually it was actually, you know. Now that we're kind of working towards getting more storage, I was kind of leaving it there, so I didn't have stuff sitting in the parking lot, I was filling it, so there wasn't as much. You know, random stuff, but now I'm going to have a lot more space to put stuff in, so. I'm happy to move that and never have that there, I'll sign off that that won't ever be parked there, and you can find me if I do, because I won't put it back there. You know, as far as the fans go, though, I mean, that's not, I'm not. Changing the fans as part of the site plan, they're not on my site plan, has nothing to do with my site plan, and I I am honest in saying that. I've been renovating the fans because I need to do that, and I'm telling you, that's what I'm doing, but that's not, it's not have anything to do with our site plan.
Josh, I just want to respond to that, I understand that it doesn't have anything to do with your site plan, but on as a zoning board member, I believe. That when you're asking for additional approvals from the village, you have to establish compliance with with. Existing code regulations, and I'm not entirely sure, and you may be in compliance. But I know that I have spoken to people at your business, and I don't know if I've spoken with you about the noise on this fan many times, and nobody's ever seemed interested in even looking into it.
I mean, I I know that that's fair.
There's some mechanism, because I don't think there would ever, there's ever going to be another time, I mean, I've spoken.
It's getting replaced, I I can, you can put that in there if you want, because it is getting replaced, I've already contracted to have it replaced. It's it's just too old, I mean, that fan, all the fans up there were from when I got the restaurant. So it isn't like I added fans, it was that's that was there before. But, you know, they're old and that that particular fan is just a big fan that makes this loud rounding grinding noise and.
I think. Yeah, I think you need to appreciate that just as you run a business, we we have a house. And our house is in the historic district and it's an eighteen forties house, and it happens to be the first residential house. In proximity to your business, and it's a fan that sincerely interferes with our use and enjoyment of our property. So I I've been a good neighbor for thirty years, and I really haven't ever complained, but this is my one and only opportunity to say.
I mean, honestly, it'll be replaced regardless of whether I put this pavilion up, it has nothing to do with pavilion. You know, I've been, you know, trying to put a lot of money into the business, I renovated the bathrooms and, you know, I want to do this. And, you know, just take this opportunity to to speak about the need for this is. You know, I have a big restaurant and there are a lot of seats, and we're talking a lot about parking and how I'm going to add. I I had for two years straight the same seating and I didn't add people in the restaurant. I just had people that prefer to eat outside because they're not comfortable eating inside. And there are so many people, which residents of the village, people from the area. They no longer will eat indoors, they will only eat outdoors and. You know, I really want to be able to provide a place for these customers and you'll see like when that. Tent is full or when the pavilion is full, you walk into my dining room, it's going to be almost empty, and that's always the way, that's the way it was all year last year. And I can't materialize customers because I'm adding something, I'm just basically providing. An option for people, and this is because of COVID and things have changed, obviously, people don't like to eat inside the same way that they used to. And I think this is important, it's something that my customers ask about constantly, we'll have. You know, twenty seats open in the restaurant and an hour and a half wait on our front patio, happens all the time now. You know, it's it's really kind of a redirecting of customers rather than adding people and adding. Traffic and congestion to the village, but you know, I'm happy to go to Richard McKeon and and, you know, secure this deal. To make this thing all work, I, you know, I want to work well with the village, obviously, I've been involved in village committees and. You know, I'm on the the board of the Chamber of Commerce, you know, I want to be a part of the village, I'm not trying to fight the village in any way whatsoever. But I really think this is going to be. An excellent thing for the village, I think that it's going to make my property look better, it's going to provide a place for people that are uncomfortable eating. Indoors to to have an outdoor dining option, so I I think this is a real win for the village as well as, you know, for my for my customers.
We have any other comments from the board Suzanne?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm I'm here Elijah Bender on other business, but I just want to say that as a fellow restaurant owner, I agree a hundred percent with what Josh is saying. And I think it's a great project and I I recommend that you go forward with it. So, but I'm here on other business, but I couldn't help but listen, so I want to add that.
Thank you. Suzanne, you had.
Yeah. The letter from the Church of the Messiah, it was really completely vague about what will happen two years. From now, if this goes forward, will Josh have to pay an additional eleven thousand? That was totally unclear, I was wondering, Josh, if if you discuss.
You know, it's. And I'm sorry that it was done so hastily, I'd been contacting Richard about this and he's serving on grand jury duty. So it was kind of like away and he just drafted this like in some sort of break. To kind of come up with something, he's totally in agreement to do this, and what he was talking to me about was to do some sort of maintenance agreement going forward. To help him with the parking lot and, you know, I I wanted to, in, you know, there's an in lieu of fee, obviously. And that's something that I could have just. You know, brought to the board itself and paid the eleven thousand dollars to the village instead of, because I would have been still outside of my fifty percent. Capacity, but, you know, it seemed to work well where I could give the money to him, I know that they need the money and he was happy to do it, and that's what he wrote up. I can't really, you know, speak speak to that, but you know, certainly. I mean.
You don't expect to pay an additional eleven thousand every two years to renew it, that would be pretty absurd.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to do that, but, you know, we'll work, I have a good relationship with him anyway, we'll we'll work something out, but it's, you know. It's been this way already for the last two years, there hasn't been any increased parking from Terrapin, because there hasn't been any increased people.
The village board is working on outdoor dining, the village board is working on. Parking in lieu of fees and coming up with a better concept or a system for that, so, you know. And and you know, eventually, you know, hopefully sooner than later, they're going to come up with something. And so we'll just see how that goes, so this is good, but I think speaking to, you know, Michael. And Ryan, I haven't heard from Jeff or or John yet, they'd like to at least see the CEO look at this and our attorney look at this. And make sure this this looks kosher, and then I don't see anything else stopping the approval of this thing.
We saw, we heard. In a prior meeting on this, if the Church of the Messiah would grant the ability for the parking and it's clear in the. Agreement letter that we received earlier from from the church that this would be for evening parking only, which. Gauging from the letter meant anything after five o'clock PM. So, a couple of things I'm wondering, we, it was raised in an earlier meeting that if this were to come to a fruition. That there should be some appropriate signage indicating to people where they could park. And I would suggest that that signage should also alert people that it's for evening parking. After five PM only, now Josh, you're open on the weekends, so that's something I think that would need to be clarified. With the church, because if you get a lot of brunch or lunch activity. As I read that, they would not be able to park in that lot.
Well, we don't seat the dining room during lunch, so, I mean, it's. I would say lunch is never more than half of what our dinner is, our dinner is always twice twice lunch in terms of business, that's always way lighter. You know, in terms of the amount of people that we do for lunch. I'd never have a lunch that's even approaches what our biggest dinners are.
Yeah. I would like to, just as you graciously agreed that we would apply as a condition. That the catering truck not be parked on site, I would, I would like to see.
Only happy to do that, I.
I would like to see as a condition that there is appropriate signage, just letting people know, so there's not a lot of confusion in terms of parking, that that's not. In fact, a municipal parking lot for every shop in the village.
You can put that as a condition and I'll pay for that, I'm happy to do that, and you know, I'll move that trailer in good faith within a week. You have my word, and you will see what my word is good for, because I will do it.
Just one question, I think maybe this is for Ryan. The. The village code has a section seventy two dash three that addresses noise. And there are a lot of provisions and the definition of what noise is and the specification that each. Violation. Each offense will be fined in the sum of money not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars for each day violation. Will constitute a separate offense, so Ryan, do you know if this? Code has been applied by the zoning enforcement officer to any businesses to date?
Not to my knowledge, Jeff, and not being the zoning enforcement officer, I I I believe. There is also a stipulation in there, a condition in there that there's a decibel. Number that has to be read by a decibel meter.
Yeah.
In order, I think, for that type of enforcement to happen. But not being the enforcement officer or, you know, have the years of experience as, you know. Mr. McLaughlin or Mr. Noyas has. I really think that question is more appropriate for them or for one of them.
Um, okay, then then maybe we could, we could ask Ken for an for an opinion or at least a response on how he sees. Noise abatement and and in noise. Nuisance. Being enforced.
I know the village does have a decibel meter, I believe it's in the possession of the police department.
Okay.
And I know. Briefly, it was used once by the police department. For the Amsterdam.
Okay, I I I I would request then that we we get some kind of clarification from Ken about how and when that would would be used.
Sure.
Not that I'm assuming it may need to be used. But as Michael and Rachel have both pointed out, it 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 can get pretty loud, hopefully the replacement of that equipment by Josh will. Abate the situation, but if it's not, I'd like to know that. We have that option.
Honestly, I don't think that it's going to be a high decimal number, the problem with that fan is it's the frequency. Which is, you know, I think it's a low frequency that travels far, and that's been the problem, probably why Rachel is getting it in her house and. You know, and hopefully that the new fan doesn't have that bad low rumble, because it's not loud in that sense, like if there was music or something like that. But definitely. It's an issue for her, and I understand that, and you know, it's certainly something I want to work to correct, but certainly, I I don't think that you're going to find a problem with decimals. I remember there was some live music playing at. This was like twenty years ago at Firebird or something like or fifteen years ago, and I remember. The police were out with their decibel meter and it was like, you know, band music and somebody was playing, I mean, which is, and it was still underneath at that point, you know, or just like right at the level. And which is so much louder than that fan, so I I'm just guessing.
Yeah, would be would be great to do a before and after.
The fan is constant and it's all day.
Yeah, no, I I get that, Rachel, I'm not saying. You're looking at a decimal meter, it's not that type of noise, it's the type of noise that's bothering her, and I get that, and I want, I want to do something to correct that, and you know. I'm already replacing their equipment, so.
Yeah, the the noise section seventy five dash four, item B describes a noise disturbance, includes any sound which annoys. Or disturbs a reasonable person of normal sensitivities, so I. I I think Rachel sounds like a person of normal sensitivities to me.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know quite where we go from here, except that I would like to just learn a little more, Ryan, from. Ken, how how, you know, what what the enforcement pro process is.
All right, I think we'd like to have. Whichever zoning enforcement officer you want to use, look at the contract as well as our attorney. And look at the fan and how that's handled, maybe even go listen to it and make sure the new fan, look at the specs for the new fan. So we can ensure that it's going to be much quieter. So we can ensure that it's going to be much quieter.
Of course.
Until you can come back in two weeks, we'll continue the public hearing and we should be able to finalize this on the twenty-first.
I have a few comments.
Yes, John.
Um, first of all, I think that, um, something like an extra air fan is considered part of a site plan approval. We've been involved with other fans and air conditioning units and other sorts of things, and we've regulated those to the benefit of neighbors. So I think we could, we're, we're within our rights to say this fan, if it is a noise maker, needs to be, um, fixed or replaced. Um, secondly, the parking agreement, we've been, we've had past problems with another restaurant in which a parking agreement came and went.
Yep.
And it leaves the village hanging. Normally for a parking agreement, you want a, a sort of a long-term agreement. Um, or a revision clause in the agreement that says if that parking becomes unavailable, then the applicant has to come back to the planning board and negotiate some other opportunity, including the possibility of removing seating. So, um, I think that has to be understood going in is that the use only is, is gonna be conditioned on the availability of the extra parking.
Uh, that's fine.
Yeah. Um, just some site plan issues, um, the, um, the parking aisle in the back is only twenty feet. It's twenty-four feet at the entrance going back and then at the L shape, it's only twenty feet and our code requires twenty-four feet for backing up without hitting things. So that's gonna have to be adjusted. Um, and then secondly, and one thing you can do, I don't know about moving the pavilion, but you can make the ADA spaces eight feet instead of nine feet, which gives you a couple of extra feet.
Yeah.
Uh, because eight feet is required, not nine for ADA parking in the aisle, the ADI aisle. Um, for the accessory buildings on the site, um, you're in the special sensitivity overlay zone. The village center portion of that, you have to abide by the adjacent residential setback requirements and as far as I can tell, you need to have that, uh, corner shed five feet from the property lines on both the front and the side, or the back and the side. And I'm not sure, I would assume the same thing would apply to the, um, dumpster area, the enclosure. Uh, but that might not be because it doesn't have a roof. So, um, certainly the shed is gonna have to be moved off the corner to comply with the five-foot setback. Um, that's, I think that's all I had. I, I agree that this is a good solution. I think the building will help, um, shield the fan noise, but I think the fan should be replaced if it's thirty years old and making noise one way or the other. Um, I agree that the catering trucks should be off-site. And, um, I think you also ought to go to the village or someone ought to go to the village and um, allow parking on street, um, to the south of the, the restaurant.
I've already spoken to Gary about that and he wants, you know, what I was talking to him about was doing something like a, um, you know, tw- half hour parking so people can, uh, you know, that wanna get takeout. A lot of people that don't even wanna get out of their cars still. You know, it'd be nice if people could pull up there after they moved the, um, hydrant. It was no parking there, but I think that, that, that's, you know, and Gary agrees with me that that, that should be a parking area. And that was also an area during the day that could be used for, um, delivery vehicles, uh, so that they don't have to pull in and out of the lot, um, with those big trucks. They could just pull up the sides since we, we don't have, uh, customers at that time when they come.
Yeah, closing that one driveway allows that space to be expanded. You can get three or four parking spaces there.
Yeah.
Which helps. So, and, uh, to any rate, I think it's, you know, I'm in favor of the plan. Let's just get the details right. And, uh, I think hopefully next, next time we can move forward. Uh, but I would like to see the village attorney or somebody at an official capacity go over the, um, agreement with the church and make sure that it's satisfactory for the long-term needs of the village.
I mean, and if you wanna make this, um, conditional and I have to come back if, after this agreement's over and need either present my new agreement or work out another situation with the village, I'm happy. Because obviously at that point, everything's gonna be changed with the village. Village is planning on changing all of the.
Yes.
So.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, could I address the, the comment that John Clark made about the parking lot, please? The, um, the straight at, the straight in parking at the northern edge of the lot with the twenty-foot aisle, that actually is an existing condition. Um, I was aware that the backup spaces are part of the twenty-four, uh, but there's a light pole and, um, you know, some, some of the things at that point. If we move those to get the twenty-four feet, we're actually gonna lose a space in the aisle coming in on the left-hand side from Livingston. So one, one thought thing we thought was to maybe indicate that that would be for compact vehicles as opposed to, um, supersized pickups or S U Vs, but, um, that would might be a more practical solution than actually adding a four feet to that backup space and losing a parking space coming in from Livingston.
Uh, well, that's part of the reason why I said the ADA space could be reduced by a couple of feet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that gains you two feet and so therefore all you have to do is find two more space, two more feet. Um, because right now you can back into the aisle there. Um, anyway, and there's no provision in our code to allow, that I know of, to allow compact spaces with a short aisle, shorter aisle. I mean, I think it makes sense. You could maybe go to the Z B A and ask them to do that, but I, uh, I think the better solution would be to try to find twenty-four feet. Or, um, I think those, those are sort of the only options.
Okay.
All right, so nothing else, we will continue the public hearing.
Um, Mr. Chair, Victoria, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Oh, hi, everyone. I'm sorry. I don't wanna extend the discussion more. I just wanted to add, I know there's a lot of talk about noise, that in twenty seventeen, uh, we had a noise consultant hired to review noise issues, uh, for a restaurant across the street. And, um, you know, he was estimating that the traffic from ru- Route nine alone was sixty-five to seventy-two D B A. So, you know, the traffic from Route nine is already very loud. Um, you know, if there's a fan that needs to be fixed, uh, obviously it should be fixed, but we just wanted to point out that eh, the neighborhood and the Route nine traffic is already very loud and just putting that on the record. Thanks.
I'm sorry, I have to put on the record. I've lived in Nine Livingston Street for over thirty years and we do not hear the traffic from Route nine at all, at all. We hear the fan. I mean, I, I'm not sure, Victoria, I don't know fully what you're, I mean, where you're getting your, other than, I, I believe what you're saying. I'm not doubting you, but I you empirically speaking, that is not an accurate statement. And that's all I wanna say. I've said enough. I've said well, all I need to say, and I, I support the project as well. I want you to know.
I mean, I, just so you know, I'm not making this up. The D O T estimated that there, at the time in twenty seventeen, there was an average of eleven thousand ninety-four vehicle trips daily, and that is how the sound consultant came up with that noise.
I, I.
I don't wanna get into the.
Yeah, it's fine. I was just, I was just putting it on the record.
Our sound travels. Rachel lives X number of feet, uh, from Route nine. How much is the drop-off? Let's, uh, let this go. I appreciate your comment, though. All right, so we'll come back to this in two weeks and hopefully finish it off after we get our attorney and the zoning enforcement.
Thank you for your time.
The second item on the agenda is, uh, fifty-six Livingston.
No, it's not, Chair.
And they needed more time.
They needed more time.
So we're postponing that to the next meeting as well. And so the next item on the agenda now is going to be seventy-two Livingston Street. Modification of a house in the historic district.
Okay, so, um, I'm back along with Victoria, Polidoro and Elijah Bender. I know Victoria submitted the application. Um, but she asked that I, she asked that I speak about, uh, the intentions for the renovations to seventy-two Livingston, which is a diagonal neighbor to my house. Um, this is, uh, I think one of the older houses, but it's hard to tell. It seems that way because of its scale. It's quite a bit lower to the ground and lower second floor than the houses on either side. But, um, it has vinyl siding on it and it's, it's been, um, a rental property, I think, for as long as I've been here. Um, but it's in reasonably well-maintained, but, uh, the new owner, um, Elijah Bender, um, wants to remove the vinyl siding and I certainly endorse that and I imagine the board would too. Um, he removed it in certain areas to assess the condition of the wood siding underneath. And as you would expect, some of it is, some of it is deteriorated, some of it isn't. Uh, we discussed the pros and cons of, um, of simply, you know, reusing what we could and replacing what we couldn't. Um, but the, the challenge is that as in many older houses of this period, the siding sits directly over the framing. There is no sheathing. And so there, there's sort of nothing behind the siding and the only insulation right now on the house, um, is a thin layer of foam that sits over the siding and under the vinyl. So as we discussed the options for, um, re-siding the house with wood, um, the owner felt they'd like to reinstall a, um, a thin insulation as both a, some insulation, but a vapor barrier and put wood siding to match the exposure of the original over the, uh, over the older siding, rather than remove all the siding on the house. Um, and then, and then remove the aluminum wrap that's over the window and door trim and corner boards and replace that with, um, again, wood as, as needed to sort of pad that out, but basically to end up with entirely wood, um, finished structure on the outside, office, stations and so forth. Um, I think he's talking about, um, and Elijah can confirm this. Um, for the, uh, for the roof, um, uh, well, I think a, a new roof. Right now, I think the roof is not very old.
That'll be, that'll be down the road, I think.
All right, so, so, all right, I thank you for, for weighing in. So we're not, I'm not gonna disturb the roof at this time, but the other thing.
Gutters will have to be replaced, but.
Gutters may have to be replaced.
Not certain of that just yet.
Right.
On that.
Right, okay. Um, and then I think it also, also down the road, we may be looking at replacing the vinyl windows on the first floor with two over two. Uh, I'm not sure.
Windows, but we're gonna go back for that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but this is actually driven by the need to replace the sills, which are rotted at the bottom of the houses. They are in many old houses um, with new, uh, pressure-treated cells to match the dimensions, which I believe are roughly six by six uh, around the house. So it's a fair amount of work simply to, um, prepare decay. Um, but at the end of the day, we'd like to end up with a, with a building that's, um, had its vinyl siding removed and trim and so forth and replaced with wood. Uh, and that's the, um, that substance, I think. I guess this front stoop also is gonna be repaired. Uh, is that correct, Elijah?
I think just pointed. There's really not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
Do we have comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a good plan. It's, it's nice to see things in a historic district kind of be brought back to closer to what they originally looked like, but yet updated uh, with more permanent materials, um. It looked like there was some work going on in that back. I don't know if it's a garage or shed, you know, can you fill us in on that?
Right, we, uh, we replaced some rotted boards repaired, rotted novelty siding. And we, uh, we had to put a new cedar shake roof on it. There were about four layers of roofing on it. We did all copper drip edge and, and the like. So that's all squared away and buttoned up. And I had to take a tree out. It was pushing up the foundation. Luckily, we saved the building in time that it didn't have to be torn down or anything. So it was in bad shape.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, um, Ryan, could I share my screen?
Sure.
Is this visible?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, um, yeah, as it, as you pointed out, it looks like a quite, quite old building. I think the documentation said it was probably a circa eighteen sixty building. While, while you're working on repairing and upgrading the exterior, the question is, on the left side of the house, there's this concrete block chimney, which isn't even painted up to the top. Is there something you could incorporate into your plan as you're restoring the exterior of the house to make it look good? To do something to minimize the visual impact of that concrete block chimney from the street?
Certainly, we, in fact, I spoke to Warren about that just this morning and he can fill you in on that. It was on my, on my list that I was, you know, I didn't figure it went with the, the historic character of the neighborhood. So we spoke about, about options on that.
Right, so I, I indicated that we could put a parch coat of stucco over it, which would at least would clean up the look of the concrete block. But then a more, uh, aggressive treatment would be to put a brick or stone veneer over the chimney. Um, I don't, I mean, I, I would again defer to Elijah, whi- which course you would like to pursue at this time.
Well, I would like that. I'd like to say that Herman's Law Office, uh, which is next to your building, Warren, there has a, a cinder block chimney. You know, it's a historic home and it's all wood siding and everything. So it's not unusual that you see this, although it's not, it's not ideal to have a, a, a block chimney. I'd like to wait on that for the time being and then come back to the board for approval as needed, but it is on my list.
Thank you for that, Elijah.
Thanks.
Anyone else on the board have any comments?
Uh, I'm, I'm looking at this picture and the, the window on the left and the upper seems to be more horizontal than vertical. Is that something that could be addressed at this point?
Well, the trouble is you have, they're dormers, you know, it's a, it's very short ceiling. It's a story and a half house and you don't have much light. That's would be the master bedroom. So that horizontal window, although it's not most visually appealing, I'd say is, is doing its job and providing adequate light to that section of the house. Maybe I can add a grill to it and that would make it look a little better, but.
I'm sorry, could I just ask John Clark for clarification? Which facade are you talking?
Looking at the east side of the house, I think, right now, that vertical.
He's talking about this?
The horizontal window on the east side of the house. It's a slide.
That's actually north, but that's the one. Wait a minute, that's the south.
This one.
Yeah, yeah. That's an old wood window that was probably put in in the forties or fifties. But as I said, it's, it's, uh, it's serving its purpose. There's limited headroom and there's limited space there, but I've could put a grill in there and change the, the, the screen and it'd probably look a little better. But it's been there. It's been there for some time. It's not, uh, uh, a more recent change to that house. But I, I really don't wanna address the windows right now, so.
We're, we're here tonight to talk about.
I do plan on doing work on the windows. That is in part of the plan for the future, but.
This, this is great. This is very, this is fantastic. It started with the aluminum siding. That's, that's really gonna make a major improvement.
I think.
Anyone else have any comments about this?
Yeah, I, I agree that this would be great to get the, uh, the aluminum or vinyl, whatever it is, off there. Um, if indeed, when you're taking it off, you find enough, um, intact um, clavards that you could do the front of the house in old clavards and the side and the back with new to match. That would be, uh, helpful because there is a difference in look and we've asked that on other places to use the, if you can't have all of it, at least the front of the house in original clavards, but that's only if you can find.
I understand.
Um, so just, um, I think we could approve it either way, either with new or with replacement on, on just.
A lot of it's in bad, bad shape, but then again, you don't know once you remove the entirety of it.
Yeah.
Work on it. So we'll see what we can do to save some of the old material. I mean, it's all gonna be there, obviously.
Technic- technically, may I just ask a question? Because they were planning on putting the new clavard over the old clavard. So if some can be saved, this approval would allow them to put up some other kind of uh, wood facade to remove the original clavard, because then they need to install the, um, the foam.
It puts some sheathing.
Or plywood or.
Right.
Um, if, if you are, I didn't realize you're intending to leave the other clavard and put the, um.
Well, that was the idea. So you, so someone down the road could see what was under there, you know, years prior.
Yeah, but the problem is, is then when you frame the, the windows, it's, it's not gonna have the good rel- relief on the windows because you're gonna be piling up uh, siding so that the windows will look recessed rather than stand out. Um, is there a way that you can change the trim, uh, add to the trim on the windows?
They are changing the trim as part of this. The trim, I, if you saw from the picture, and it's rotted.
Warren can speak to this on the.
Yeah, we, we were gonna pan it out, John, to match the profile of the original trim, but to get the relief just that you mentioned, so that window trimbles and door trimble sit proud of the siding.
All right. All right, well, if that's the case, then, then I, I would call my suggestion and, and you can. Alright, alright, well, if that's the case, then, then I, I would call my suggestion and, and you can do the whole thing and do, I just know for one thing, n- new wood is never as good as old wood, if it's, if it's intact. So you have better quality wood if you can save the original.
Right.
Um, but um, I understand that when you put vinyl up, a lot of times you have rot underneath. And uh, it's pretty hard to have enough to uh, and if you start doing patching, it never looks right. So um, I'm okay either way. I was just setting that as an option.
I just got through with the rear, with the, with the, the back garage shed there. So if any of you take a look at it, you'll get an idea where we're going with the, with the front.
Alright.
An indication of how we wish to proceed.
There are no more questions. Um, I have a motion uh, to approve the modifications of seventy-two Livingston Street.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Suzanne, is it a roll call vote? Michael Key?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Okay, good luck, guys. Great job. This is really fantastic you're doing this.
Thanks, we'll see you soon. Thanks for.
Bye, good night.
Your support. Good night.
Next item on my agenda is another renovation to uh, Southern Historic District at sixty-three South Street. And uh, I believe the applicant has, I submitted a letter of what they're doing. This is uh, Matthew Money Penny.
Hi there, yes, I'm here.
Great name.
Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, so um, you're doing some work, I think you submitted a whole list of all the things that you're doing. As uh, the board have a chance to look at that?
Yes, yes, I did.
I think I looked at it from the prior submissions. It wasn't sent out again this time, wasn't it?
So.
Should have I revise it into a format that I thought would be easy for you guys to read and gave it to Ryan? I'm not sure. It should be in your packets along with um, what is original survey, because nothing is changing on the site plan, and uh, letters from neighbors who are thrilled with the restoration so far.
Right.
It looks good. Um, I appreciate everything you've done so far.
Thank you. It hasn't been easy, but this is not my first historic. I have the disease. I like to take old unloved historic homes and make them their original gorgeous selves or as close as you can get.
What's the siding on there now, or what was it?
The siding is um, very badly applied aluminum siding. And then under that is the, I forget what it's called, the thinsulate, um, it's kind of the, the foil insulation. The good news about that being done is that the novelty board, which is the beveled notched novelty board, is in fantastic condition. So we've peeked all over the house behind it, and I've actually taken the aluminum siding off the east wall of my house and the rear of the house. The east wall, all of the wood is still in excellent condition. Um, and as you were talking about uh, with seventy-three Livingston. Once you take the aluminum siding off, you get that really nice relief around my windows and my sills. Um, I have the original shutters for the east side of the house. The shutters still exist on the front of the house. But now I can mount the original shutters back on the windows and the side of the house, once we get the novelty board restored. If we do discover any novelty board as we go around the rest of the house, um, that's damaged, there's enough in the back. Um, which obviously you can't see from the street, to replace those boards. So the three facades of the house we see from the street will be perfect. And then the back would be either hardy or boral board. They make a notched wood that is very similar to the novelty board that I had, and that would, that would replace anything that we, we use from the back.
Very good. The only, the only other point that I meant is that we always ask for the sidewalk to continue across the driveway. So um, and if you do that in, in um, bluestone. You'll get cracks usually, or you know, doesn't stand up the vehicles over time. So how do you, how, how are you intending to handle that crossing?
Well, I did, when I, the house was inspected in October, but I didn't close until uh, the day after Christmas. Because, not because of me, but just COVID delays, COVID delays, COVID delays. At the inspection, I knew I had low water flow. This is answering your question, by the way. Um, I knew I had low water flow and I knew I had an old whaler. Um, the day I closed on the house, I had no water and no heat. So uh, that was the problem with the water main valve, which had been buried under seven layers or eight layers of, of asphalt on the driveway. Um, which is almost unusable without, unless you have a truck, you could not pull into my driveway without bottoming out, bottoming out a little bit. So the first thing I did was repair the line all the way to the main, put in a new valve, moved the valve out of the driveway. The dri, the original valve had been embedded in the driveway under McAdam. Scraped it down, saved the Belgium block. There, there was a little bit of original belt, handcuffed Belgium block, which I was able to save and reuse. And now it's been um, gravel packed. And it's ready for a final layer of river mix gravel, which is the sort of traditional old home uh, river mix of stones. The area that you're talking about has been dug down properly, um, after the trenching to get the water main and all of that correct. It gave us the opportunity to put a proper pack in there. And um, it was actually being leveled and packed again today. And then, I don't know if you guys have been by my house recently, but the um, I'm replacing what was badly applied poured concrete with, with bluestone. So there'll be two by four. Um, I believe it's two and a half inch thick bluestone, which mirrors my neighbor to the east. And everyone across the street, my neighbor to the west still has poured concrete. That's, that's there on site and you can see it, and it, we're hopefully laying it tomorrow.
Yeah, I was asking about how you're gonna continue that across the driveway? You're just gonna do the bluestone?
Oh, um. I believe the bluestone is across the driveway. Uh, I was going to use the original hand-cut Belgium block to make a skirt, which just makes, I have a little bit of an incline on my driveway. So when it's, you know, for inclement weather, uh, uh, it would be nice to have skirt before and after the bluestone sidewalk. Or apron mother, um, made from the original hand-cut bluestone, which is rare and very expensive to, if you bought it new today. It's extraordinary. It's fifty-five dollars a stone, shockingly. Um, so yes, but to answer your question is yes, the sidewalk will go across the driveway.
Alright, that's all I was, otherwise I'm, everything you, you're doing looks good.
Thank.
And you have the lower sashes of the window after repair, and you're gonna replace them, I assume?
Yes, they're actually, they're in the house. Um, I don't know if Warren is still on the call, but I, I talked to Warren about maybe expanding the house when I bought it. Which I guess would be the smart financial decision to try to add a little bit of square footage. It's a very small house. Um, the ceilings in the bedroom upstairs are maybe six feet two inches, and I'm six feet tall. Um, but I have fallen in love, as I always do, with the charm of the house's shape and character. And I, I'm not changing anything, I'm just restoring things. So the windows are inside the house. They are beautiful wood. I have several original panes of glass. Um, the cracked ones, we are replacing with the wavy old style glass. Um, I've already had the stained glass window in the bathroom, which you can't see from the street restored. That's in the house. Um, it has, it has really amazing casement windows, and on the original hardware, I was able to restore and clean up. Um, so yeah, nothing, nothing will change, but if you look at the house now, what you're looking at are storms.
Right.
Is inside the living room is where my window restorer, um, who specializes in historic homes, is doing the actual work. They're, they're almost done and ready to be put back in, actually. And same with the second floor windows.
Nice.
Um, while we're on windows, I have all my original storms and screens, and most are in great condition. They just need a sanding and a paint job and better, you know, better, better hardware. On the second floor of my house, there are really badly installed, cheap. Um, they're the kind of like screens that slide up and down and windows, storms that slide up and down, that were badly, badly installed. I do have the original storms and screens for that floor. Um, so those will go back in as well, once we get the, the old one, the, the the janky ones out of there and restore the uh, the window panes on the inside.
Sounds great. Anybody else on the board having any more questions?
Yeah, I, 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 I like everything on the list that's being done and being presented, and I think it's really good. And you don't really kind of see this kind of intensity on some of the old houses. So I appreciate what's going in. And almost forty years ago, I used this house when I challenged my up and assessment to, I was the newcomer, and it was like, but look what this house is being taxed at. And that was in, that enabled me to get my assessment lower down. The only thing, uh, you answered the thing that uh, the two things that I had with John about the, the sidewalk. The last one is adding mini splits wherever needed, and we've had issues with mini splits um, the last few years, just kind of coming on after we've approved something. Um, I'd almost like to see where they're going, or um. Uh, there's a, there's a, I think it's the Phillips house, which is almost across the street. It's blue. She's got mini splits and she made a nice chase and was able to hide the out, outside. Um, oh.
But Michael's froze.
The, not the wires, the pipes or whatever they are that, that feed them. Um, so that when you're out on the street, it almost looks like molding, but then we had somebody just down the other, same side of the street that threw eight or nine of them on, and we had to go after her because it was never, never on the site plan and, and landscaping. So you know, this is a new technology that's kind of uh, come up. And we haven't had somebody, you know, full-time in the, in the building for, since COVID till recently. So I mean, this is something I think we have to kind of not just, it's at the bottom of the list. I think it's part of a site plan and we have to be aware where. And if it's a screen, does it, does it tie in well with the historic nature of the house?
I can actually, I, I mean, I, I, I am so sensitive to all of these issues. I, I, I might even drive you guys nuts with my level of detail. But the um, I am using the conduits on the outside of the house that you can paint to look like they are part of the house. Um, I only need two compressors. It's, my house is very, very tiny. They will be aft of the Bilco door. If you drive by my house now, you can see one wall of emerald green screening that I put in um, in consultation with my neighbor to the east. And when they are done putting them in, there will be three emerald greens also right at the end of that Bilco door. So you will not see any of the uh, compressors. And um, you also actually won't even be able to see the pipes as they enter into the house. But regardless, they are the kind that attach to the house and are paintable and look, read as if they are part of the trim. So there won't be anything, there, there will be no HVAC uh, equipment visible from the street. Yeah, um, similarly, I put the oil tank, which needed to be replaced anyway, in the basement, so that is also no longer visible from the street. Um, the other things that are on here, I think are pretty standard. Um, I'm replacing the roof at some point, that's a little bit down the road, uh, but with a standing seam, same uh, medium gray color. Uh, the garage roof currently has holes you can see through and a nest of squirrels that will get re-roofed at the same time. Um, the house, the gutter system in the house does not work at all. Every time it rains, it pours both into the house and into two spots in front of, and behind the house. That will be copper um, uh, half rounds and leaders. Um, and the garage will have matching, but in a, in a color that matches, probably white that matches the uh, woodwork of the garage. The garage is novelty board too, is being sanded, restored, uh, broken windows repaired. And it needs a new garage door, which will be congruent with the architecture of the garage. The current garage door works, but not very well. Um, it was badly installed, if I'm honest. Um, what else should I tell you? Um, and there are two screen doors on the west side of my house that are bad, janky and not original. One is a screen door to nowhere. On the inside of the house, it's actually a really lovely wall, probably made from the old Dutch door bottom. And historic, if not to my house, an old stained glass window that's actually quite pretty. That screen door will come off, and we will continue with the extra novelty board we have. So that the door to nowhere, it's a really ugly, I don't know if you've seen it, it's a really, you, you probably have when you used it, that's an example. For your case, it's a really bad screen door. So that will come off and the, the siding will be congruent with the rest of the house. And the one in the rear um, will be replaced with a wood storm door that matches the original wood storm door on the front of the house. And that's actually on site as well already, but hasn't been installed.
But Matthew, this all sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
We appreciate, as you know, we just spoke to the previous applicant, we appreciate people taking the time and energy to restore, you know, our, our buildings in the historic district. Does anyone have any other questions? And if not, would someone like to make a motion to approve sixty-three South Street?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, John makes the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Michael Key seconded it. A roll call vote, Michael Key?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Well, good luck, Matthew. Great, great work.
Awesome, thank you, David. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, Matthew.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is also postponed. North Duchess Hospital has some signage. They're not ready. They will be back at the next meeting. The last item on the agenda is uh, Darren, talking about seventy-three South Street and what's happening over there. Good evening, Darren.
Hello, sorry, just trying to get this mic on. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Alright, excellent. So um, I didn't really bring much in the way of exhibits. I do have a couple of photographs. I can share my screen. Um, but I was asked to come on tonight just to talk a little bit about uh, the fences that have gone up along South Street, or the fence that's gone up along South Street. And I um, told there was a complaint about height uh, as it relates to that. Um, so I can clarify that uh, as a starting point. Um, there was apparently a complaint that the fence was seventy-five inches above the, the surrounding grade. And uh, the simple answer to that is it was a, a pre-completion uh, measurement that was taken. So we went ahead and put the final topsoil and mulch and plants in. So now, um, per my measurements this weekend, it's anywhere from seventy to seventy-one inches now above grade. Um, with the code allowance of seventy-four inches, so um, a couple inches below the allowable.
What was the idea between the, about the concrete walls? What we will be thinking?
Uh, there's a couple of things. One is, you know, realize that our entire yard space is there on South Street. Um, so to provide a little bit of privacy. And the concept was that the house is going to be entirely white. And to put a green wall next to it, of vines, is just sort of an aesthetic that we thought would, would, would really be appealing. And growing vines on something wooden is a recipe for replacing whatever that wood is every ten years or so. And growing vines on something masonry is a recipe to keep it for, for many, many years, you know, fifty-plus years. So uh, if, if you've been by there lately, you notice that there are, as per the building permit application uh, two acacia vines planted in front of the fence, which have started to grow. And they're fairly aggressive growers. In fact, so aggressive that we put them in little collars, little cuffs to prevent their runners from running out and taking over, but allowing them to just grow up, seek sunlight and cover that wall. So we're expecting, you know, the bulk of that wall will be covered by the end of this growing season, and then it'll be pretty densely green. Um, and that is an evergreen vine, by the way. Um, just hanging on to that. So what you'll see is the effect will be just a, a green mass.
So that was on the originally approved site plan?
That was not on the originally approved site plan. It was on the building permit submission for fence.
I don't um, I don't believe that uh, there were many um complaints about the height of the poured concrete wall that is in place there. As much as the anecdotally, the, the things that I've heard, that it was uh, to a lot of people, quite shocking to see a, a six-foot-high poured concrete wall adjacent to a historic building in the historic district, right, pretty much right on the street. So I as well am very confused as to how that could have been to how that could have found its way through the site plan approval process and be granted uh, any approval. What is it, uh, David? Darren, I'm sorry, Darren. Wh- what document are you referring to that was an approved document to allow a poured concrete wall on the site?
I think it's the permit for the fence. Right. The fence says no metal, you know, chain link or, or plastic fences in the historic district. Don't say anything about a concrete wall. It's not in the uh, that's not.
In our book, David, one twenty dash thirty-nine.
Yep.
The number six, recommended facade materials. Wood, stone, stucco, solid PV, fiber, vinyl, aluminum siding, sheet trim, shutters, awnings, artificial stone or brick. Exposed concrete blocks or concrete walls shall be prohibited.
That's on the building. What does it mean for a, a quote fence? I, I don't.
Yeah, it just. And you know, something like this should have been approved on the site plan. It shouldn't be an administrative after the fact fence. That's, that was my feeling that, you know, this should have, if you were going to have a. Fence or a wall there, it should have been approved as part of the site plan. And then we would have had the option of saying. Well, maybe we can live with that or maybe we would suggest something else.
No, understandable and just appreciate that. You know, I, I went through what I thought were the proper channels. Usually everything begins at the building department. And we get referred to the planning board and, you know, the site plan was some time ago, so you know. The ideas come together as you're finishing the project for your final bits of landscaping and fencing and things like that.
So it's an evergreen vine. It will be there all the time. You won't see a concrete wall in the winter.
Correct.
It doesn't need a lattice or anything to grow on to?
What we've done is we've put some small stainless steel nails in to allow it to attach to. So we're waiting to see how that grows, but the idea would be if it does require a little bit of support, we would do something that just blends in with the wall behind. Or with the vine itself. So the idea would be, we're not trying to put, you know, a wooden structure on it that adds a level of busyness to it.
You know, and also. Allow a certain amount of disguise for the concrete wall.
Yeah, I mean, the whole idea is that the, you know, the, it's a concrete wall for a few months and then you never see that again.
Yeah, well, I guess.
Well, I, I kind of look at it like it's a concrete wall for generations. I think, I think we, I, 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 I would like to see some steps to explore further how this could have happened. I, I have to be honest with you. I agree with John Clark's opinion. This. It should have been on the site plan. I could be wrong, but I cannot imagine. That any planning board would have approved a poured concrete six foot high wall right on the street. Next to a historic building in the historic district. I, I would be flabbergasted to imagine. That could ever have been approved. I'd like to know if we have any options. To address this. I think it's a problem. I think it should never have happened. I think it detracts and diminishes the value of the historic district in the village. And I'd like to know, Ryan, what our options are.
Once again, Jeff, I don't think I'm the appropriate person to be weighing in on this. I believe this should go to, I believe your question. Should go to Ken and Justin.
Well, I, I then I'd like to have something because. I wouldn't, I don't know if there's a solution to this eyesore. I, I, I don't know if, I, I don't, and I'm asking, is there anything that can be done about it now? If there's not, then without question, we need to do something to prevent something like this from happening again. If it happened once, it can happen again. My opinion is, with my concern about the historic district, the value of the historic community. This is, this is a real eyesore and. I, I don't like the idea that a precedent has been set that anyone would look at a application. And accept a six foot high poured concrete wall. Next to a historic building on the front street in the historic district as consisting of fence. That's a problem.
My next topic was going to be. We had a meeting of the historic preservation subcommittee of the comp plan committee and Lydia. Has asked us to submit to Tim Decker. Questions or problems or issues that we have with the current code. I see, I, I don't see Lydia by sea hand. Hello, Lydia? Hands up.
Hi, I'm here, sorry. No, can you even see me? Oh, wow, it's bad. Okay, hi. Yeah, please, and this obviously would speak to that. To that point of, you know, if we need to update any of our materials or anything like that. Not just in one twenty dash thirty-nine, but also in, you know, say the fence ordinance or, you know, things like that. You know, we do need to know that. I agree with Jeff that this is unfortunate. Problem that is now here. But I will leave it to the planning board and enforcement to kind of work out a solution on it. I did have a question actually, that in addition to the concrete wall, there. Appears to be a brand new concrete sidewalk and I was wondering. What happened to the bluestone sidewalk?
We have all the bluestones. We intend to use them for the landscaping. You know, the guidance I had received in the past and, and actually it's in the ordinance is that the preferred materials for sidewalks are in fact. Concrete or asphalt. So we've typically taken the tact of putting down concrete as opposed to bluestone for sidewalks. Now personally, I don't think it looks as nice. I, I would probably agree with everyone who, you know, loves the bluestone sidewalks. But from a functional standpoint and a maintenance perspective, we've just not had them perform. So, you know, when you take those, when you take those sidewalks and move them at all, even to reset them. I think we all know as property owners in the village, they crack and years of road salt and other influences. Give you pieces of bluestone and you end up piecing them back together. So we've just had better luck with. The concrete and frankly, it's, it's a lot more expensive. So it's not a cost option. It's just something that is a performance issue.
Okay, I, I, I hear that because I, I think that's also another dangerous precedent of. Pulling the bluestone off of the sidewalk and using it in personal landscaping. And I know that we all own our sidewalks and this is sort of a bigger problem that the conference plan is also thinking about. But having our bluestone sidewalks disappear and turned into personal use. I think it's something that we also need to be thinking about long term.
Well, just please appreciate, I mean, I'm being painted as a fairly bad person here. Disagree with the characterization that the code in fact doesn't even mention bluestone sidewalks. It mentions. A spec for concrete sidewalks and it mentions a spec for asphalt sidewalks. So. The guidance is like, here's how you do it. You know, we're not trying to do anything malicious.
Yeah, no, I, I don't mean to be painting you in that light. I think, I think what you have done is, is. You've pointed out various parts of our code that I, I, I think are worthy of being aware of. And, you know, whether we want to stick with how they're currently written or whether we want to change them is, is, is ultimately the big question, but. You know, you, you have. You know, for better or for worse, you, you've, 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 you've pushed them to their limit a little bit. And that's totally fine. I'm not trying to paint you as a bad guy at all. I mean, you have, you've gone within the bounds of the code and I'll let. You know, in thi- this group handle it, but I, I do, i- i- it was just an interesting opportunity to sort of recognize. What, you know, historic landscaping. Or, or landscaping allowed in the historic district is, is currently allowed to look like. So, so I, that, that was, that, that was all I wanted to point out, mostly to the planning board, actually.
Yeah, and then please also appreciate that the, the historic district is, is new in that section of South Street. You know, came along while we were under construction. And the building, although it's being referred to as historic, you know, is not listed anywhere. It was in fact us who, you know, and this planning board praised us for it. When we did the house in front of it, were the ones who elected to, you know, keep it very, very historic looking. And, and at great, great extent of expense.
Oh, this, this particular home is not in the existing overlay. It's in the expanded district?
It's in the expanded district.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, can you explain to me what an expanded district is? Was this, was this, I mean, was this not in the original historic district overlay?
Not that I'm aware of. I, the rhyme, the historic did not come up South Street originally this far.
Darren, um, not that I, I have a hundred percent knowledge. But I believe this was part of one thirty-eight East Market Street. As a contributing structure on the property. But because in your subdivision of twenty thirteen, I don't know what's gained or what's lost. When that property was subdivided into three parcels, that's way over my head.
It's listed in, in both the maps that I have. It's in the historic district, the original. Historic district as well as the buildings on the south side of South Street.
Okay, then I'm misunderstanding because originally it wasn't ever talked about as part of the historic district. So it's, it's my confusion. I apologize.
I mean, I'm pretty sure it was talked about in twenty thirteen, Darren, when you subdivided. That one giant lot into three, but I don't know if at that time it was technically. Made on the record as a contributing structure.
Yeah, I mean, this is really the first conversation about it being, you know, significant unto itself. Other than the fact that, you know, we just said we were going to respect it because we really enjoy the structure. And, you know, I believed it everything we promised to do. You know, at very great expense. I mean, there's, you know, simulated wood siding on it, but the effect is wood siding. The rafter tails have all been replaced with true wood. You know, the roof is a metal roof. We're going with a classic color scheme. You know, restored the original doors on this, on the building. Simulated divided light windows made of wood, you know, on and on and on. So. You know, that was what we promised to do and that's what we're doing and, you know. To comment on it at this point, I understand it's the board's job, but I also think, you know, give us a month and you're going to see a much different looking. Property here. And I think, you know, what everybody's responding to when it's covered in green is going to be a whole different situation. And then of course, we're sparing no expense on landscaping either. We're just, you know, we enjoy landscaping and part of the idea of having a small property is. Because you can spend a little more on things like landscaping. So there's quite a bit more to come. Including the, the ginkgo tree that was put in, you know, at our option, not by the tree commission.
And can I share my screen?
Yes, Chair, yep.
Works, yes, green. Where is it? Here it is. So if you look at the nineteen seventy-nine map, green is a good, red is extremely important building. Green are contributing buildings. There's one thirty-eight and the other two buildings that are there. And the mobile station is listed as a modern intrusion, of course, but so it was all part of that project and then of course you subdivided it. Into three different lots, but it, it's, it's there from nineteen seventy-nine.
Okay, I mean, this is the first I'm seeing of this map, so thank you. I don't doubt it. It, it seems to make sense.
It's on one of the walls. I guess on Ryan's wall and Village Hall.
It's also, it's, it's also on the two thousand and nine map, Mr. Mr. Chair, that's, that's on the village's website.
And I.
Can do about this concrete wall?
Well, let me, let me, just let me ask, I have to ask, I have to ask. Darren. Understanding the sensitivity people in the community have to the historic district and the appearance of all that stuff. I have to ask, would you be, would you consider taking that concrete wall down? And proposing an alternative solution for that location? I wouldn't. It's just, it's just too expensive and undertaking. In fact, there was a problem during the construction of it. That led it to cost twice what it should.
And is the, is the poured concrete wall that's in the back of your property also part of the approved site plan?
It's not. Both were submitted as permit, fence permit applications.
So you have an approval for that second poured concrete wall?
We have a fence permit for it. They were both submitted at the same time.
I, I think we have to look at this, you know, we have to talk about this and get this to Tim as soon as we can about things that are missing. Like the exact materials that are allowed in the historic district in terms of fencing. The exact materials in terms of siding. I know it says hardy board. And we've commented many times telling people, use the smooth hardy board, not the wavy hardy board. Because that looks fake. So we should certainly change that. So if you guys can think of the things that we've stumbled across.
Yeah, well, here's a, here's a, here's a pretty good, here's a pretty good case and the results of it is that the historic district will suffer a concrete wall for. Generations. You know, you may have, people may have personal opinions that putting vines on a wall makes, a concrete wall makes it attractive. Many people don't think that. But we're apparently stuck with it, unfortunately.
Well, Jeff, I, I would say this was, I don't know, eight, ten years ago. We had somebody near the corner of Chestnut and Mulberry. A structure on their property without a building permit, without, without any kind of approval from the planning board. And after it was up, they were brought in and did a song and dance. And eventually the village made them take that structure down.
Well, just to clarify, this was not done without a building permit. I think is the big dis- difference there though.
I think the problem is, is that. In the transition from zoning enforcement officers and building inspectors. This should have come back to the planning board, something that wasn't a simple fence. Because, you know, even in the fence gates and wall section, it says, construction of a new replacement existing fences. Requires a building permit. It doesn't say walls. So I think the problem is, is in the. Permitting, administrative permitting of a wall. That was part of a, should have been part of a site plan amendment. So it's, it's. It's a procedural problem. This should be corrected, maybe not so much in the code itself, but just in the procedures of. Our building inspector. Now, the question is, what can we do about it?
Nothing now.
Well, not necessarily. There are interim things you can do short of tearing it down. So, you know, the, the applicant has said they putting vines in and I know. A lot of people criticize things until they're landscaped and then they say, oh, they don't look so bad. I, I would prefer to see some sort of treatment of the wall before the vines grow up so that the vines. If they don't fill in and create this beautiful ivory colored wall, that you don't see the material at all. That you have something else to, to break it up, you know, like a lattice work or. A painting solution. I think a lattice might, might make some sense. You put a lattice up on the front of that wall. It helps to grind the vines to grow evenly. Instead of just streakly and then you also get the partial. Shielding of the wall itself by the wood. So a cedar lattice might make some effect. Over that exterior wall. And that wouldn't be that expensive and it could be done now before the vines start to grow, for example. I don't know, other people might have other ideas or don't like that idea, but that's at least. Short of tearing it down or leaving it the way it is, solution.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an option. We'd, we'd be happy to explore it a bit. I think it, it creates busyness, which is why we didn't think to do it previously. I think it just creates more contrast with the wall. But it's something we can certainly look into. And the other just point I want to raise is, you know, when I, when I did ask the question, even prior zoning enforcement officer. You know, one of the comments was that when fences are measured, if they're sitting on any kind of structure, masonry structure. They're considered part of the fence. So I think that's also. You know, that's where, where a lot of this comes from too, is that, you know, anything from the dirt up is, is part of the fence. Just for, just for clarification in terms of how fences are perceived. Or partial fences are perceived or partial walls are perceived depending on different materials. They're all kind of perceived as the same thing. And I'm just offering that as insight. And then the other just quick comment I want to make, it's, it's sort of irrelevant to the issue at hand, but you mentioned hardy plank quite a bit in your. In your code and just in your comments. And I would just point out that, you know, that's a brand and a specific material which. You know, many people. Yeah, but I, I would, I would recommend maybe just broadening the term because there's far superior products that look much more like wood and perform. Far better than hardy board does. So, you know, in the, is. So, you know, in the, as the, as someone who builds a lot in the village, um, and used to build a lot with hardy board, I would, you know, suggest that there's maybe some better things you can encourage to that have come along since that was invented.
Well, we call it fiber cement in the code. Is there a, a better term that you would suggest?
Um, I don't know. I'd have to think of what the generic term is, but for instance, on this building, we use something called LP Smart Side, which is actually, it is wood. It's OSB with essentially a candy shell on it. And it's the closest thing we found to a historic clapboard on the market. And, um, it takes paint much, much better. It's smooth. It looks just like wood. And, you know, before we used it, I soaked it in a glass of water for a year to see if it expanded. And there was no noticeable expansion from it. So, you know, I think products like that have come a long way and are starting to replace hardy. So just saying that out of, I'm sorry.
What's the name of it again?
It's called LP Smart Side.
I haven't heard that one.
And then there's a, you know, the trim board that we've used in this application is called Boral. It's Boral True Exterior. And, you know, to your comment earlier, it comes in a lot more dimensions than some of the other alternatives on the market. Um, again, it sands, it, it tools just like wood. Uh, it's rot resistant, uh, takes paint incredibly. It looks just like old wood, especially if you ease the edges. And, uh, it'll tell you it comes in a lot more dimensions than some of the stuff you can buy as alternatives. So you can get that historic reveal around windows, which is what we did in this application. We were able to use to buy material in order to allow the, the reveal between the clapboard and the trim and the corner boards. So we use a lot to recreate historic details because you just can't buy things that are outside of the three quarter and one inch thickness range as easily anymore without going to wood and wood has become somewhat inferior and naughty. So just for whatever that's worth.
Yeah. Well, we're looking for alternatives that do have the historic appearance, appearance once they're painted.
Yeah.
At the time we did the code, the, the best example was fiber cement, but I know they're still working on things.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, that, that is a, a good material, but, you know, I think there's just better. So I just wanted to put my two cents in because, you know, we wouldn't want to exclude something that might be better. And we used it a lot at Seven South Street as well. A lot of the recreation reports there are also made of those two materials I just described.
So if you want to, you know, get some suggestions to, to Tim about loopholes you see in the code, maybe modifying the kinds of siding, what kind of fencing. Try anything else you see in the code that's, you know, not clear. Um, we want to, we want my, I think Lydia wants to get eventually next year, change the code, upgrade it, and we should have the, the stuff we discover.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to, uh, to share some of those products or the, whatever the generic term is for them. So it doesn't exclude things that might be good.
Appreciate that.
Any, anybody have any other questions for Darren?
Um, what, uh, what was on the approved site plan that we did so many years ago in terms of the sidewalk out on the street?
Uh, just a sidewalk. I'd have to go look to see if it called out anything specific.
Well, I think we need to know that because I can't remember. It's not in front of us. And Lydia is basically saying you picked up a public sidewalk and put it on your property. I have a concern about that. I do agree with you. I prefer cement over blue stone. But I, I know I'm probably in the minority.
Uh, Mike, I referenced the meeting minutes from two thousand and thirteen and the board, um, only states to replace the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's pretty wide open.
I, I have blue stone sidewalks and my stairs coming up to my front door are concrete and they're rotting away. Someone's coming actually to to the resurface them because the salt. And he said, use calcium chloride from now and don't use salt.
Yeah.
Just eating away that, and the blue stone, you can put billions of tons of salt in it. It doesn't do the blue stone any damage at all. Um, so, you know.
But the blue stone gets slick and, and, and wet rains and polished over time. Um, I think, I think the concrete is, uh, the best way to go, except on particularly sensitive buildings like the Beakman Arms or something like that. And I think asphalt should never be used for sidewalks.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, and then just to complete the story around the sidewalk is we're in the process of planting, um, some three hundred and sixty woolly time plants. So the idea is that the whole front of the building will have just sort of, you know, it'll appear like grass, but it'll have a lot of the time kind of creeping onto the sidewalk and all to, to help really tone it down. So.
Is there a way that you can get that sidewalk to cross your driveway or is the, uh, grade too much?
Um, well, we, we meet the grade requirement as it slopes down because you're allowed 10%. So we were able to stay well below the 10% as it makes the transition. Um, the driveway, the only tough part of the driveway is really just like damming up drainage. So we, we haven't quite figured out the final grading of that just to, to make the water work. Um, but the hope would be we can continue it across.
Right. There's no sidewalk on the other side of that, right?
No, then it just runs into like a mound of dirt and then eventually, yeah, really just a, a, a little bit of a forest area before it gets to Mobile. So there's no further sidewalk between us and Mobile.
All right. Any other questions for Darren?
So we come to some conclusion about the wall, what to do?
I I don't know. He, he got a permit from, from the building inspector, from the CEO, to build a concrete fence. Cause it's not clarified in the code. What would you just suggest?
I made a suggestion that's, you know, I'm not sure that we can require it, but I, I think, uh, I'm concerned that the vines by themselves are not going to fully disguise that wall. And I, I think a lattice would help.
Well, that, I think Darren said he would look into it.
Right, okay.
I, I, I agree.
Members agreed with that.
I, well, I, I agree with you, John. And as much as I don't think the vines are gonna, uh, fill in and, and look well, but um, I'm not sensing that the, um, that the applicant has any concern to do anything about it and that there's nothing that we can do about it now. No, I, I wouldn't say that's a fair characterization. I mean, I think we've always shown that we're concerned about the village. Um, we own multiple properties in the village. We live in the village. This is my personal residence. Um, so what I, I think I'm reacting to is just, you know, I feel like I followed the process properly. Um, and I feel like we're doing a really nice job here and I feel like we're
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that there and, and you guys have done some pretty, pretty good work. Uh, and I can tell you that, um, I understand that you feel like you followed the rules properly and that you're doing a good job. It's always good to feel like you're doing a good job. Well, I was, I feel like I wish there was more sensitivity to the historic district. And there's not more I can say about that. Um, I don't, I don't mean, and, and just to get back to, um, and I agree with Lydia. I don't think anyone's cutting you out to be a bad guy here. It's just disappointing, not, not just for some of us, but for a lot of the residents of the community that they're going to have to live with this. And I guess that's all we have to say about it.
Well, what I was going to suggest is that, you know, give me some time to finish the project. And then I just come back to talk to the board, you know, in, in this kind of manner. And, and we, you know, we can react to the final product a little bit more and, and see if there's anything along the lines of what Mr. Clark proposed that should be done to, to help things along.
That's positive, Darren. Thank, thank you for that.
All right. Well, we'll see how it goes towards completion there. And then thanks, thanks for coming in and chatting with us.
Sure. And I'll, I'll schedule that with Ryan. Just give me a little bit of time to get some paint on and some landscaping in. And, you know, I think reacting to a finished product is gonna, you know, I'm hopeful people, people will change their opinion a bit. And if there's some things we can do to, to massage it along, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
The, uh, we have a discussion, um, the village has been working on, they had a public hearing uh, on the outdoor dining concepts, what to do about outdoor dining. And we have, uh, Brandy Lee Nelson from Ty and Bond who wants to, uh, make a presentation of what, of what they're thinking about.
Sure. Hi, Mr. Chairman. I'm Brandy Nelson. I'm, uh, village's engineering consultant and, uh, we're working with the village board um, to develop a permit for, um, on sidewalk dining. Um, it would be somewhat different than what has happened the last two years. Um, while there were some COVID allowances where on-street parking um, has been made available to accommodate, um, outdoor dining options to give people, um, more highly ventilated spaces for, um, the purpose of, um, of continuing the, the business, uh, restaurant businesses in the village center. Um, I think due to interest and due to the fact that some of the local restaurants, um, do not have outdoor spaces already available to them, uh, to use for outside dining. Uh, the trustees are responding to, um, some feedback, uh, from the business owners and, um, are working to put, um, a, a process in place for this, for this season, um, to permit outdoor, uh, sidewalk dining. Let's call it, um, on sidewalk dining. Um, and just given that this board is one that deals a lot, um, in issues of community character, you're, you know, intimately familiar with the historic district. Um, I, we had talked with, uh, trustee Slaby about, um, presenting the design criteria that we've put together for the, uh, permit um, to this board, just as a courtesy to give you, you know, a, an early look at it. And then if you've got any feedback for us, um, we can take that incorporated in. We have had one public meeting, um, on the twenty, was it the twenty-third, Lydia? It was the twenty-third of May. Uh, that was very well attended. There was a, a lot of really good com- uh, comment. I, I don't know if any of you made it for that meeting. I do have the brief presentation that we provided to the public at that time. So I'd be happy to share that with you if that would be helpful in terms of background. Um, or I could just simply share on screen the, uh, design, uh, criteria that we've put together um, for the on-street dining and, and take it from there. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, whatever your pleasure would be is, is fine with me.
Yeah, I think we could just see what you're thinking about.
Sure.
Dining, because I had spoken to the mayor, you know, we just approved the issues. We're about to approve the Terrapins expansion. We approved Pete's famous putting four tables down the alleyway. And I said to the mayor that you should, you could figure something out where if they've got the space, it's not blocking the sidewalk. Put a few tables outside, put the seasonal tables. You don't need to do this major site plan modification in front of the planning board. We can have, you know, the village clerk issue a temporary permit. A lot more sense for people to do it, you know, if, and it's tight because it's just, you know, tight sidewalks. Very small sidewalks in certain areas like Garden Street and down, uh, in the bank parking lot and stuff. There's almost no sidewalk. So
Right.
Whatever people could work out, you know. So, so, well, what is your concept that you're thinking about?
Sure. Um, so, uh, Ryan, am I able to share on screen the design standards?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just do that real quickly. And so let me just say, you know, I, I didn't invent these design standards on my own. Um, we did some research, um, on communities that have, uh, design standards in place already. Um, and some of those communities included, and, and we contacted Dutchess County, um, planning department and, uh, talked to Dylan Tuttle, the village's planner. He, he said that the county hasn't put forth any design standards yet. Um, but he was among the individuals who provided us some additional resources. So should I make this a little bit bigger for everyone to see on screen? Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
For everyone? Okay, great. Um, so, so these were put together, um, based on a review of Richmond, Virginia, Boston, Massachusetts, um, New York City, um, Salt Lake City, which actually has some really lovely, um, materials for design standards. Um, and a handful of additional places. What we found in looking at, um, the standards is that there were some common themes. Clearly maintaining accessibility along the sidewalks is of absolute paramount importance. So, um, you know, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned that, um, you know, we want to make sure that those sidewalks remain passable for all the users. Um, so just in terms of what we've put together, um, there's some dimensional and space allocation requirements. And then there are some requirements for the actual, um, physical improvements that would sit on the sidewalk temporarily. So I'll run through each of these. So the first being that this is temporary in nature would terminate November one. Um, the second pertains to maintaining the sidewalks free of obstructions and maintaining a five foot clear width. Um, with limited areas that have a minimum three foot width. That's, uh, the ADA minimum width. Uh, typically when you have a three foot wide path, you need a passing distance every two hundred feet. What we're trying to accommodate for is providing a three foot width where the tree wells, uh, for instance, on East Market Street extend into that walkway. So, um, if there was facade tables, uh, against buildings, um, they, the restaurant at that location would need to provide a minimum three foot width past the tree well. Um, no obstructing fire hydrants, emergency ac- access or entryways. So, you know, maintaining all the egress points um, and emergency services along the sidewalk. No permanent structures. So everything would be temporary. There wouldn't be any permanent structures that would be affixed to the sidewalk. Um, movable barriers. So movable barriers would be some sort of solid perimeter around the dining area. Um, this is something that, um, the New York State Liquor Authority requires if, um, alcohol will be served. Um, but it also serves to define the area where, um, the on-street dining would occur as a controlled area. And, um, you know, in addition to limiting any issues that might pertain to alcohol service, um, really defines on the sidewalk where the dining spaces versus where the walking spaces. Um, the recommendations on the specifics for the barriers, um, again, come from a number of design standards that we, um, observed in our research. Um, so thirty-six inches high is the typical height requirement. That way there's no blockage above for obstruction of views along the sidewalk. Um, durable materials, uh, in talking with trustees, they wanted to see something high quality and then uniform and dark in color rather than having kind of the hodgepodge that we had last year with a variety of different materiality. Um, so trying to give the streetscape a little more um, uniformity. Um, the New York State Liquor Authority will not allow bollard and rope style. So no bollard and rope style, uh, dividers. It will need to be a, a solid divider. Uh, we don't want any advertising on the dining area. Um, and if alcohol is being served in the sidewalk dining area and a no parking zone is located adjacent to the public's, right? The dining could be established on the curb side, um, as opposed to on the building facade side. Um, that is, again, only in a case where there'd be a no parking zone on the street. Uh, what we're trying to avoid there is potential conflict between parking vehicles and seated diners. Um, and then understanding that some of the facades are fairly narrow, um, a, uh, allowance that with the permission of both the building owner and the business owner of an adjacent property, the applicant, so the restaurant owner could seek out those permissions and potentially extend the seating area um, along twenty-five percent of an adjacent building's facade. Um, again, not blocking any alleyways, driveways or egress ways. Um, no music outside. So just for noise control issue. Um, limited exterior lighting. Uh, propane heaters. We've reviewed the, the use of propane heaters with the fire department. Um, they need to be used for the manufacturer specifications and not stored outside, um, on the sidewalk um, overnight. Um, umbrellas must not extend into the traveled ways. They must be, uh, clear of the, of the traveled way where the walkway is. Um, and again, of a so- similar solid cover, cup, excuse me, color, um, with no advertising on them. Uh, tables and chairs constructed of durable materials. Uh, thirty-six inch clearance and access aisle between tables. Um, in compliance with the New York State Liquor Authority, no outdoor cooking, uh, compliance with the village's noise ordinance. Uh, and rules shall be strictly enforced, including a summary, um, abatement of violations and revocation of permission to provide the sidewalk dining. So a lot of the feedback we got from the public was just about making sure that if this is moving forward, that it is enforced. Um, we've included a, just a really small schematic to give some dimensional specifications. Uh, what we've got is a street here in the lower part of the schematic, building in the upper part of the schematic, um, the seating on the facade side of the The seating on the facade side of the building. Maintaining a three to four-foot width into the building. And maintaining a three to five-foot width along the sidewalk from the street curb. So. That in summary, I know it's a, it's a late night and you guys have been at this for a long time this evening, but if you have questions or. Comments, happy to take those.
I think you've done a good job. Highlighted the. Issues we've been talking about. So this would be. Done as they have to submit a, a plan. To maybe reviewed by the zoning enforcement. It must have gone there and measure that there really is three to five feet or whatever.
Right, that's correct.
And then the, the village clerk could sign off on issue a permit or.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the exact mechanism. And Lydia, I'm not sure if you've got any insight into that from speaking with the attorney about the mechanism, but. But we envisioned it as an application form with a small sketch plan. And yeah, it would have to be demonstrated that the area could be. Could accommodate the requirements, particularly with the maintenance of the traveled way being three to five feet.
I have a couple of comments. I went to the public meeting, but it was so crowded, I decided to leave. I, I just have to be too careful. Ninety-six-year-old mother, so. I, I. I think three feet is way too narrow for a pedestrian clearway. I mean, that is limited to. You know, one person passing, you know, so you're going to get in busy times on weekends. People single file down the. Down the sidewalk. Between the tree, tree well and, and the. The barrier. Three feet is just too narrow. It, you know, it doesn't allow for the free flow of. People on the sidewalk, which is sort of the health of the village. If we want to build ourselves as a walkable community. We can't be putting up obstructions on the sidewalk that totally restrict traffic flow. I mean. That's my opinion. I know. The sidewalks are too narrow and the comprehensive plan committee is looking at. Ways to increase sidewalk width. But, and I, and I'm sympathetic to the restaurant owners and I. Would like to see. Then be able to have outdoor dining wherever it's possible. But if it's. Not possible without blocking the sidewalk, I think it shouldn't be allowed. That's my opinion. There, there are opportunities for sidewalk. Or outdoor dining without blocking sidewalks. And I think the sidewalks are like crucial to the village, just crucial. The, the county does have standards. In the Greenway Guide, that on the walkable communities, it says. Sidewalk design should be a five-foot minimum width, six-foot wide is better. And eight to fifteen feet in Main Street commercial areas. So obviously, we're not going to get the eight to fifteen feet, but we certainly should. At least have five feet so you could have two people pass. I would prefer six to eight feet, but I understand, you know, this is for one year and. Not permanent, but the problem is, is I think. If people establish. These standards and buy the. The equipment necessary for them, they're going to lobby very hard to keep this going and it'll end up being a permanent thing and we'll have permanently. Restricted sidewalks. So my advice is that if they can't make five feet, they shouldn't be allowed to have it. That's, that's what I feel.
Mr. Clark, may I ask just a clarifying question? Because maybe I didn't present the information very well, but. I think we agree five feet should be required. We're suggesting three feet where there's a tree well that might protrude in. So for a very short. Distance having that three feet, is that? Different than what you understood me to say before?
Understood what you said. I just, I think it should be five feet at the tree. In between the tree, otherwise you have a choke point at every street tree. Which, those street trees are like twenty-two feet apart. It's not a big distance. And you're going to have backups on the sidewalk. Trees, and I just don't think that that's acceptable. So I think you have to have the ability to pass somebody. I would, I would say six foot is a minimum, but I could probably live with five foot for a season. But three feet, I think is unacceptable. That's, that's my, my opinion. And. I, I was told, and I'm not sure, I haven't seen it in print. That the ADA standards were going to be changed so that it's a minimum four feet for ADA standards. But I haven't seen that in print yet. I saw it as, you know, the rulemaking is in, in process and it will be changed. So we've been trying to. Use four feet as the minimum for ADA standards. Anticipating that that's going to be the future standard. So that's. Worried that this is going to turn into a permanent situation and we just can't afford to have that sort of constrictions on the sidewalks.
Sure. Okay. No, I appreciate that feedback.
I, I, I agree with John. I had said that. If like the petite bistro wanted to have a couple of doubles. Not two sets of doubles along the windows and going down towards the liquor store at nine. That could sort of, you need the barriers as well, but to have four, you know, double tables coming out. That, that, that really makes, if people come down with a baby stroller and a dog, take the whole sidewalk.
Okay, no, that's good.
Tripping on the dog leash.
I would actually prefer to see these in between the trees rather than along the facade of the building.
The, the tables?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting point.
Them eighteen feet inches from the curb line that people can open the door and get out of the parked car.
Yeah, and, and we have not, I know you've surveyed those sidewalks, John, right? You did that recently. So you may have some data that. Would be useful. Maybe I should talk to you about that offline because I wasn't sure if there was enough space to accommodate tables in any reasonable fashion, giving a. Setback from the curb line, but still maintaining a five-foot width.
It's not very many places because the, the planners generally are three to five, four feet. Yeah, so you don't get much. But if you put them along the front of the building. You know, it's just going to make a, a real constriction at, at every tree.
I, I think the only other consideration though for thinking about having that against the building as opposed to in between the. Tree planters is. If we have table service that has to cross the sidewalk, that creates a conflict.
There's no good way of doing it.
That's right, right. So that was one consideration for thinking about having it on the facade side.
You know, I would be more in favor of having. Parklets. Than dining on sidewalks.
Yeah, you understand. Yeah. So, so, Mr. Chairman, as far as your comment about size of tables. You're thinking, if you can, can you see my cursor on the little schematic? You're thinking this size table, right? Not this size table.
If you double it up, you push further out. You know, and, 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 you know, there, there are so few areas where the curbs are marked in yellow. Most of Market Street from the petite bistro all the way to CVS. Is, is parking.
In front of Samuel's, maybe?
If you have someone eating in the sidewalk, I don't know how that, you know. They open, if someone opens a car door on the passenger side. And car doors are very large, three or four feet long. They could, you know, hit a table. I don't know. It's like John said, there's no good place to do this.
The, just to clarify, the only, the only place on Market Street that doesn't have parking in front of it is Samuel's.
Yeah, when you reach right before CVS, you know, the curb turns yellow for the turn. You know, and then there's the crosswalk zone. But. I don't know. It's a problem. And as I've said several times, this. People came before COVID and said, you know, the, the Thai restaurant has. A dozen or more tables on the side and behind the restaurant. They're lucky. Next-door cinnamon doesn't have any on the sidewalk. They have an open door you could open and sort of be inside, outside of that. In the wing of the restaurant, but they came to us and said. If you approve this plan with this number of tables, we can make money and prosper. Now, because of COVID, gotten a taste of dining in the street when, when they closed the streets. And. Now they want to try to think a way to do that permanently. And it's a challenge because we have very tiny sidewalks. And the ones on Market Street are the widest ones. Like I said, Garden Street or. The bank parking lot, they're very small. And then the only other way is to take, you know, a lot of parking lots away to build, you know. I don't know. It, it's a real challenge to try to do this. I appreciate your efforts. Trying to come up with a solution.
I think we just, we want to, obviously, the priority is maintaining passability on the sidewalk. So. If it doesn't work for a particular applicant, it doesn't work. You know, that is just the unfortunate circumstance. So. If it does work, then, you know, it does work. I, I don't think that the trustees intended to say for. You know, four top tables or two top tables, you know, each applicant is going to have to judge their current facade situation and sidewalk fronted situation. Based on the, the parameters and then decide if they can make an application.
Oh, is this just dining? Because I think some of. Sidewalk sales several times a year in the summer. And now I've seen some, you know, racks with dresses where the two top tables would be. That in consideration as well, or only talking about dining?
Yeah, yeah, just dining for this focus.
David, there is an existing law on the books that allows for retailers to. Have a rack or a table out on the sidewalk against their facade. That's existing, that's been on the books since well before COVID. So this issue is just focused on dining.
Yeah. Well, you have planters and benches and. You know, a lot of other stuff along the sidewalk that's there. We let people put benches and planters out there. I don't know. This is, this is a real challenge trying to figure out how to make this happen.
Yeah, and, and again, I think the intent is to, to provide a stopgap measure this year. I believe the. Village trustees and the comp plan committee are thinking more long-term about a, a more. Kind of holistic solution that could be implemented. So. There was a lot of emphasis at, at the village board meeting a couple of weeks ago about that this is a solution. Just as a stopgap for this coming year.
I'm just afraid that if you require them to buy all these tables and barriers out of high-quality materials. The investment will be such that. There'll be a really strong push to keep going on this. I also looked up. Jeff Speck's book on Walkable City Rules, which is a hundred one rules to how to make here. And their recommendation is a six-foot minimum. Clearway. That you shouldn't go below that, so. I don't know, I just think three feet is, is unacceptable. Five feet is as minimum as I would go. So you at least have the room for two people to pass. Or a couple to walk together. As something, when you get into single file. It's just not going to work. They're going to, you know, people are going to. Bulk up between every tree well. Waiting this sort of single file through that one spot and, you know, you'll have to have. The east flowing pedestrians wait for the west flowing pedestrians. I mean, it's. Three feet is just not enough. I just don't think that that's acceptable.
Sure. Aside from passable width, was there any other? Commentary? Dark colors seem okay. No advertising seems okay.
Yeah.
Unless they want to put Village Rhine back on there.
That's probably a story for another day, the village logo, right?
Thank you, thank you for this, Brandy. This is a lot of work and, and, and. Seems as though the. The. Policies that you've sourced, I think have thought through a lot of things. I agree with John. That. I think five feet. Would be a good. Figure to work with when we look at the diagram or the. You know, the example that you're displaying on the screen. Showing three to five-foot minimum from some, let's call it a. Tree well. To a solid barrier. I guess my question is. What's the likelihood that many restaurants will want to have solid barriers to enclose? A separate heat, eating area? And if they do, I think John is also quite right. That would be a great expense to, to purchase that hardware and. And, you know, in fairness, they would want to use it each year. So my question could be. Why not show a, instead of saying here, why don't you have barriers to enclose your eating area? Instead of showing that, why not show? If you can put. Table seating. Outside your facade, there should be a minimum five feet. From such an obstruction to the tables, not. To a barrier that's enclosing an eating area. I think there may be some restaurants that might have the room in the front or, you know, notwithstanding John's observation that. It might be better to put the tables between the trees. But that there may be. Several, several. Restaurants that could have a five-foot. Minimum walking space. I don't see a lot of people walking through, you know, being on, on wheelchairs or walkers through town, but I see a lot. Of people walking with canes. I also see a lot of people with baby carriages. And dogs, and some people with dogs and baby carriages. So, you know, there's that kind of passing lane issue that would have to be dealt with. And I wonder. Out loud if maybe showing a five-foot minimum traffic. Allowance between your outermost table and the next obstruction would work for this, as you point out. Temporary solution to get us through the season for the advantage of our restaurant owners.
Yeah, so the, the, I don't think that's a bad suggestion. The barrier though is a requirement. Of the state liquor authority if they are going to serve alcoholic beverages outside. So. That comes, you know, that would be imposed by the state. I think, you know, if you're a, a restaurant that does not serve. Alcoholic beverages or you were not serving alcoholic beverages outside, you wouldn't need the barrier.
Yeah, understood. And is the space in, in this diagram here, is this, is the space between the outside of the tables and the barrier line? Also kind of a working requirement that the wait, wait service could get in and out?
Here, yes. I mean, that's a recommended three feet. Yeah. I, I, I'm thinking that maybe the approach for us to do is to modify this schematic a little bit. Just recognizing the village's narrow sidewalks and not show this double row, you know, maybe only show the, the two top tables. So that there's not maybe a, a thought that maybe you could get a fourth, a four-top table out there against your facade.
I, I completely agree.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that's really constructive, so.
Brandy, I, I went to your demonstration at the village board and it was. Basically this with nice pictures of New York and Boston and San Diego and Savannah. And I looked at every one of them. I said, look at how wide those sidewalks are. This isn't Rhinebeck. And when you did the numbers of three, four, and five, I just kind of went around and said, there's. Two or three restaurants in this village maximum that might be able to get. Two tables up against the facade. And that's it. You know.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, that's, it's true. The sidewalks are narrow. So that's just what.
This generic drawing here makes it look like you, your pictures of, you know, San Diego, and that's just not the case.
Right. No, it's true. You don't have fifteen-foot wide sidewalks. That, that's, I think, a little bit more of a modern creation. Okay, well, we can modify the, the schematic just to have it feel a little more representative of what's out there.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Sure, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
So, so Brandy, because the planning board is in an advisory capacity tonight. Do you just want to go by the feedback you heard tonight, or would you want something more formally? From each member or the entire board or something, you know, contained in the letter?
Yeah, unless I don't want to put extra work on you, Ryan. Yeah, unless, I don't want to put extra work on you, Ryan. Um, I know you're busy enough. Um, you know, trustee Slavy and I are both here. Um, I've been taking notes. Um, I think it's been extremely constructive and I appreciate everybody's time. I think I can just go ahead and make some modifications here and then share that feedback with the, with the board of trustees.
Very good. And if, I mean, if any of the board members choose to type out what they've shared tonight, I will of course forward it to you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So we have two sets of minutes to approve. I want to thank Jeff once again for, uh, reviewing the minutes.
Thanks, Brandy.
All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandy.
Thank, thank you, Brandy. And, and thanks, thanks Miranda Wyatt for the minutes.
She's getting better and better and I really.
Another, another nice.
Educating her with his comments, which is terrific. Um, and so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November sixteenth as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds it. Uh, those in favor, you can raise your hand. Aye.
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 December seventh. For a harbor day. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of December seven?
I'll make that motion, Jeff.
Jeff, you have a second?
Hold on, wait, hold on. Uh, Jeff, were you present for that meeting on December seven?
I, uh.
Were you absent?
I think, in fact, I think I'm shown as absent on the attendee list.
Oh, wait a minute.
So you cannot make that motion?
Okay.
Someone else needs to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Should we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a four-member roll call vote. Uh, raise your hand, Michael, John.
I'm raising my hand.
I know, we can see your hand. You got a picture camera. Uh, are you unanimously approved, four to nothing? Okay, we're catching up. My thanks, Miranda, for all of her hard work. Anything else? Um, I'm slowly losing my voice here.
Yes, miss, yes, Mr. Chair, hopefully with the re- uh, remainder of your voice, uh, to go over. The proposed summer schedule of meetings that, uh.
How did that look?
You, you proposed.
July, what was it? July?
So for the benefit of those listening in, uh, the chair has, uh, proposed, um. June twenty-first, July nineteenth, August sixteenth, September sixth, and September twentieth.
Say that again. I'm sorry. I was getting my calendar out.
June twenty-first. July nineteenth. August sixteenth, September sixth, and September twentieth.
Know what summer schedules are.
And it's a possibility I can't make July nineteenth. Uh, it's just a possibility. At this point, we're looking into a trip to Chicago, uh, on that weekend. So I might not be back by the nineteenth. So. Um, but.
We got time, John.
Yeah.
We got time.
I, I can't do August sixteenth. I'm in Maine unless. Unless we have a hybrid or a Zoom or something which.
Uh, there's no one unless, Mike, for the foreseeable future, it's, it's in person.
Next time we meet in person.
Correct.
All right. All right, um. Do, and there's the. If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn? Let's see if they have anything on the comments.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody stay safe.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.